Where we are now, the little light block is based on what we heard from the other towns and what our minimum would change to. And that minimum is that's just that 7.71 percent.
Why is Manion not in there?
As I said, so they're not our direct competition and they tend to lag. So we don't, we just typically don't include them. They're not really direct, they're not a direct competitor and they don't have fire either. They just have police.
How about the Sheriff's Department? They do take care of Port E Island.
Yeah, we don't have their, I don't have their information in here. We can get that. But again, we're, I don't believe that the sheriffs have caught up with us, with the other, with the PDs on the beach. They tend, they made a, they took a pretty big swing this year, but they're still not, they're not competitive.
That's what I need to know right there.
I don't, I don't believe that we're going to have any attrition go from our PD to the, to the Sheriff's Office for a number of reasons.
So this is your proposal, the little extra, and these are the other extras, the extra, the white block on the other towns is what you're hearing?
Yes.
What are you gonna do? So, so even, even with the adjustments, this is kind of showing us how we stack up to the other towns.
Right. And again, this is just, this is just the minimum salary. So not, so it's our pay plan adjusted by 7.71 percent. Doesn't, the eight and a half that we're talking about only impacts people that are currently here. These, these would impact people that are coming.
Well, instance, Kitty Hawk, do you know, in fact, they're raising it to 50,000 or is that, I mean?
That was, that was the information we had two, about a month and a half ago.
So these are not your estimates, those town estimates?
Right. Based on what we heard from the other communities. And again, those were very preliminary. If someone had, well, they did ask, we didn't answer the question. You know, we asked the question, what were you all thinking? And we got these very loosey goosey, but these are kind of the upper end of what they were, they were talking about at that time.
And so this again is just to the, the 7.71 index case to the pay scale?
Correct.
That's what we're talking about.
Yep. And, and the same with the other towns. So this is just how they're adjusting their, their pay plan, their pay scales. Yep. All right. So then the, the next point we talked about was transitioning from a merit increase and merit bonus system to one that is a merit increase only. And then along with that, setting that merit pool to this year at six percent. We have made changes to our performance evaluation instrument. The one that we're currently using and will use to the end of this fiscal year is a, it's basically a one size fits all. So every position other than mine is evaluated on the exact same instrument. What we've done is divided the performance evaluations into two sections. One is called key behavioral results and the other is key performance results. The behavioral results are SOAR. So that, we needed that, the, the process of identifying our internal values, our core internal values to be completed before we worked more on the performance evaluation system. So all 40 employees, all 39 employees will be evaluated against those four values. And it would be the same, you know, the same key points under each one of those four. From there, every different position will have different performance results that are expected. You know, Joe would expect something different of a senior planner than Jeff would of a police sergeant. They're completely different roles. So they need to be evaluated on what the expectation of the position is. So we spent a lot of time, the department directors have spent time developing performance results, metrics that the employees then will be measured against. So the evaluation system has changed. We're going, we're, right now, we do them on the anniversary date for each employee. Starting at the beginning of this coming fiscal year, everybody will be evaluated in the same time period. So the evaluation year is going to run with the fiscal year. At that point, the department directors will have the months of July and August, basically, and a little bit of September to get their evaluations done. They'll then have to assign a percentage of increase based on performance for each employee. So they'll get, in the case of Chief Ackerman, he'll get a pot of money that equals six percent of the salaries of his department minus his, because that, his will be factored into the, the department directors that I will handle. And then, so he then will allocate that six percent based on, again, based on performance to, to the individual employees. So that's how the, the pool works. Did I explain that right, Mayor? I know you use this and...
So the six percent, the six percent is allocated regardless? It's just what percentage of the six percent goes to who? Am I getting that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So someone, you know, someone could, in theory, get seven percent, but that means somebody else gets five, assuming they're, we're making the same amount of money. And it's, it's based on the total dollars, not the total percentage. So the percentage, the percentage applies to the total salary and then the bucket of money then has to be allocated. And it's, it gets a little complicated mathematically, but that way we're sure that we're not overspending on the merit, on the merit pool. In this way, then, everybody's salary will be adjusted for merit on the same time of the year. So everybody's salary gets adjusted in October. It makes it a little easier for us to budget. It helps, in my mind, it helps ensure a greater level of consistency in performance evaluation. So when Deputy Chief Bachelet is reviewing the performance evaluation of all the firefighters that the captains have helped work on, he'll be able to be sure that all three captains are applying the same standards equally. And the same thing with Chief Ackerman, he'll be able to do that, or Lieutenant Clark, whoever, whoever gets to take the first pass of those. It just, it helps, it helps achieve a little more consistency. It does concentrate the work in one time of year as opposed to having them spread around. You know, quite selfishly, I want it to be done this way. Because I've got, right now, I've got three of my direct reports that I'm writing evaluations on in the middle of the budget. They don't probably get the same level of attention that someone like Joe does because he's not during the budget season. So this will get everybody at the same time, again, greater consistency. So lucky you.
There are strings locked.
That explains it.
So a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
Number one is how did you pick six percent? And secondly, that six percent will change year to year, based upon whatever your theory is, right? That six percent is not necessarily locked in. It could be eight percent, could be four percent future years?
Yep. So my, I would suspect that that will follow kind of the way that inflation moves. So assuming, if, you know, if inflation goes down, you can expect that that number will, will go down. How do we pick six percent? Yeah, it's not dartboard. So six percent is what we have this year. So not wanting to really upset the apple cart completely. So we, this year, we have three and three. So three increase and three bonus. So this is just a combination of it. Inflation's running about. You can see that it's starting to trend a little bit better. So, you know, six percent, if six percent absent eight and a half doesn't cut it, we'd need something significantly more than that.
In the, the individual department evaluation process, is that defined in an, in an effort to keep subjectivity out of it?
Yes. So the, the performance metrics pieces of it are all, that's all drawn out of the job description. Behavioral results are drawn out of SOAR. The way that the evaluations are structured, the answer to your question is no. There's always going to be a certain amount of subjectivity.
Yeah, you can eliminate it completely.
Right.
But there should be at least some sort of measurable guideline that, to support any decision that gets made.
Yeah. So I think in, you know, the, the department directors that are here in the room can, can talk to this as well. As, as I've gone through and talked to different groups of employees explaining what this system would look like, particularly people that are going to be directly involved in the evaluation process, you know, we are, we have a clear definition of each of those. There's five different ratings that someone can get. You know, we're kind of resetting to, to say that it's okay when you get an evaluation and if you get a three, which is in the middle, so that's meeting the expectations of the position. You know, in golf terms, you parred the hole. That's a pretty darn good score. And that should be the norm. And then you're going to have people that are going to, you know, exceed those expectations. And then you'll have someone that will consistently exceed. Those are your really high performance. But each one of those is defined. So they'll have to, if, for instance, if I see evaluations coming in from the police department, for instance, and everybody is rated at fives across the board, you know, consistently exceeding expectations, I'm having a conversation with the chief and say, you better be able to prove this. And, you know, well, this officer did, you know, 32 house checks. He met the expectations of the job. So we're trying to get away from the, the evaluation itself driving the percentage of merit and of merit increase someone gets. The way the system is now, it's a numbers game. Is that fair, looking at folks? It is, it's a numbers game, so you need to have a certain 100 and whatever points here, and a certain number of points there, in order to get to your one and a half percent, or your 3% merit increase. So, there's no perfect evaluation system. This, in my mind, anyway, is a whole lot closer, and is starting to weed out some of the subjectivity, and also giving people the ability to say, "You parred the hole," or "You got a bogey on this one, you need to improve." And that, to me, that's the point of a performance evaluation, is evaluating what actually happened, and then being able to coach to improve performance. Did I talk around that question without answering it pretty well?
Well, I think at the end of the day, the answer is, you can't completely eliminate subjectivity, no matter what you do.
Right.
But as long as there's some sort of measurable metric, as much as I hate to use that word, then it is what it is. I mean, if it proves to be ineffective, or it proves to be unfair for some reason, it can always be addressed again.
Right, and, and I think, you know, and I think, as we talked about this in, in department director meetings, we talked about this being kind of an evolutionary process, and, you know, I'm not putting anything in stone, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna run, run it a year. I've used systems very much like this. Not everybody's happy, and the people that end up being less happy are the ones that really need to generate their own happiness by performing at a higher level. And that's, that's what we're trying to get to, being able to recognize people that are really going above and beyond, and recognizing as supervisors where there are people that we need to bring up to playing par golf, if you will.
Couple more questions while we're on this topic of performance evaluations. Can you remind me of the folks that helped us with the SOAR? Because that wasn't completely homegrown, right? That was through the league, or perhaps, was it?
So, we had...
My question is simply, the people that helped us with SOAR, if we did have help, did they help us with the performance evaluations? And also, another part of my question is simply, I would envision that the supervisors are going to be giving feedback to the employees throughout the year, and not just rely on one-year evaluation, so I just wanted you to confirm that.
Yes, that is an expectation of supervisors, so it's, if the first time an employee hears that they need improvement is at their annual evaluation, that's a failure of leadership. And we have ways to address that as well. The SOAR was 99.8% homegrown.
Okay.
We had, Dr. Eleanor Green came and spent an evening with, we had all 40 of our employees in this room, she did a pre-survey with them, basically saying, "What's important to you? You know, what values are important to you?" And we had flip charts up, and we took the output of that evening, and then the directors met with, with Dr. Green the next day, we chopped away at a little bit more, and then we established a committee of employees. And I went to the first meeting and then got out of the way. Ms. Barnes actually facilitated that process, not wanting to have, you know, the boss in the room. We wanted this to be the values that are important to the organization as reflected off of the people that are actually doing the work, no offense to the directors in the room, but to be able to have a patrol officer, to be able to have a fairly new firefighter, a fairly new planner, to be able to have multiple voices in the room, that's, that's how we ended up with SOAR. So it, it is primarily homegrown, but, you know, and they, that committee went back out to all the employees and said, "Here's what we've come up with," and we got really good feedback from that. Very candid feedback, thankfully, and we're able to really then refine the output of that. So, that's a long way of saying, it, it's really, it's owned by the 40.
That's great. And then, so the evaluation form was based on those values, as you said, just as you've described, and so the town came up with the evaluation form?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll take the blame for it, especially if it goes wrong. I've used, I've used this, this system and a form very similar to this in the past, and we've actually had some modifications to it through a meeting with the directors. This actually requires all employees to do a self-evaluation, and to self-set goals for the coming year prior to the performance evaluation conference. So it, it's more, it's more work on the, on the part of the employee, it's a little more work on the part of the supervisor. I'm pretty confident that we're going to see better results out of it, but I have, also have been very candid with people, saying there is no perfect performance evaluation system. And anyone that's worked around HR, I think the mayor will probably tell you too, that it doesn't exist, but we try to get close, anyway.
Thank you.
I'm just looking around at my team, did I miss anything on that? Jessica's shaking her head, so, all right. Yeah, we already talked about this. The next item that we had in the, of the nine was changing the wording in our personnel policy regarding vacation accrual, to allow basically the portability of years of service. So, if someone, if we were able to recruit someone from a neighboring police department, say, that's been there for 10 years, they've started to accumulate or accrue more vacation where they are, and one of the things they would look at coming here saying, "Oh, man, I gotta start all over again." So, what, what we're suggesting is that we allow the total amount of time that someone's been serving in local or state government to, to accrue, to govern the accrual. Noted here, and I think in the information I gave you, this change would impact 17, actually, of our 40 employees that brought in prior government service before they came here, and basically all reset to zero when they started. All but three of that seven, of those 17 are folks that are in public safety that have brought prior government service.
So effectively, they just get some more vacation, and you would just make that adjustment if this all goes through? You would just reset the clock effectively and move forward?
Correct.
With giving them more vacation time based on that prior year service?
Correct, and I think, you know, Mr. Shiano, I met with him Monday, and talked through a lot of this stuff, because he wanted to at least get me his thoughts. And one of the things he suggested, and I hadn't really thought about it, is maybe as we're rewording this policy, if this is something the council wants to do, is to word in there about a break in service. So, it would have to be continuous service, so we wouldn't have someone that 10 years ago did five years of, you know, service in the water department, and then they come work here. It has to be, you know, continuous government service. Just, the, the purpose of this is for recruiting. So, when Chief Ackerman and Lieutenant Clark are talking to prospective police officer candidates, they can say, "Yeah, you know, you're, you know, you've got 10 years where you are, you come in here vacation-wise as a 10-year employee."
Drew, I kind of look at this as being a policy change, and there's no immediate impact on the budget. I really think we ought to defer this to a greater council discussion than to make it part of the budget, because, I mean, yes, it is for recruiting, but I mean, there, I think this great, this does require a greater conversation with council and with, and a proposal, and I would like to see it, in my opinion, taken out of the, the budget proposal moving forward, and make it more of a council discussion than a policy.
Are you talking about all of it, or just...
No, no, this, this piece right here.
Okay.
Regarding vacation time accrual.
Because a lot of it does tie into the budget, I would think, so thanks.
Well, it doesn't really tie to the budget at this point in time, because...
This doesn't, but I thought, I wasn't...
No, 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 not that, no.
You're talking about just the, the slide?
I mean, it's a policy, and I just think it needs, kind of along what Tony was saying, basically, it needs a little bit further discussion, you know? Is it types of service, and how many years, and would it be all the years, and relevant discussion, and...
Yeah, we, we can put that on for, we can put it on for the June agenda. The, the only reason it's in here is that we're trying to show you kind of the whole suite of changes that we're trying to make in personnel, again, in order to, in order to try to be competitive in, in our market. So, you know, we can, your May agenda's a little tight, but yeah, we can, we can put it on as a separate item in June, if you'd like.
I mean, our exposure...
If that's what the council wants to do.
I mean, our exposure right now is one police officer we haven't hired. Everyone else is working for us, so, you know, it's, it's...
Right.
Might be a benefit going forward.
Well, it's, it's actually, so it will impact that one plus 17.
17 people that exist here already.
I understand that, but they're all working for us right now.
Yeah, but my, my question is, if we adopted this here, two questions. One, the five years, is 12 days the max we're going to give them?
So, that, that table right there, that is what is in our personnel policy today.
Okay.
So, someone that's been working for the town to duck between one and five years, they get 12 years, no, 12 days of vacation.
If they came from Southern Shore, so just use that, and they were given 16 days for one to five years, are we going to take theirs, or are we just going to take what our policy is?
So, it would just be our policy. So if they came to us with nine years with Southern Shore's PD, they would be accumulating at a rate of 15 days a year as opposed to 12. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't start over, they would start, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
My other question is, out of these 14 that are in public safety, which is half of our public safety people, if you think if this gets dragged on, that they get offered a job somewhere else, they may leave?
That's, it's hard to answer that question. This isn't, I mean, I don't know of anybody else on the beach doing this, right? I don't, I don't believe any other towns are giving credit for prior service like this. So this is just another way that we can say that we're, we're leading the way. You know, the mayor's absolutely correct, I mean, this, this does not have a bottom-line dollar impact. A lot of folks get more vacation time than they use. So what that does is it rolls over into sick time, and sick time then helps for, helps towards retirement, towards, you know, credible years of service.
Just knowing about it, I mean, just talking, I think, to Sandy's question about timing and everything, knowing and making a change, let's say it was in June that we, you presented us with some policy changes, and we said, "Yes." Basically, this clock would start with the next fiscal year on any decision that we made, or does it matter?
No, they could, so that change could take effect. You know, the other one we're talking about with the health insurance stipend, we were recommending that would be July 1, or folks hired after July 1. Yeah.
I mean, I really think we have, need to have a deeper discussion, because if all of a sudden we go back and change the vacation eligibility for 17 people, that certainly has an impact on the workforce with respect to overtime and overlap and being short of staff. I just, I just think that we need to, we need to have a better discussion on this policy change.
Sure, and, so policy changes are going to come separately, anyway, so they, they won't, the only, again, all, the only reason I'm presenting them as a suite here is because we're really trying to advance a little bit in, in some of our, be a little more progressive in terms of our personnel policies. You would need to adopt the changes to any personnel policy separate from your budget. So, we would not, we would not try to include in your budget ordinance, a personnel policy change. The only thing that your budget ordinance changes in terms of personnel is the, is the pay scale. That, that's adopted as part of your budget, not this.
I mean, I mean, the downside, I mean, the good side is for the employee, obviously, but the downside is, you know, your workforce and who's available to work, and all of a sudden, now you're talking about, you know, running short in a lot of departments. So, I just, I think, that's why just we need a deeper discussion on this.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and the, primarily will, will be leaning on the chiefs to help guide that, some of that discussion. I think they'll tell you that, you know, the way they manage vacation time now wouldn't really much change because somebody has three more days in a year. Again, it's just, we're just trying to show.
Don't you guys have minimum manning policies?
Yep.
That should never be an issue.
It, it, it should not, but that, I think, and then the mayor's, I think, you know, that's a, we can have that as a much longer conversation with the council at a future council meeting. Again, I wanted to, I wanted to be sure that we threw this out there, because I think it's important, and it's, I think it's something that we can say to current employees, "Hey, you know, we're going to recognize that service you are bringing with you from Virginia, or from another place on the beach," and to new prospective employees, "You're not starting at zero here, in terms of, of leave."
And then, to the mayor's point, or even to Rob's point about the, about just staffing in general, then maybe it does affect the budget in terms of if there's like extra for, you know, part-time people that we have to hire from other, you know, that, that budget might have to go up a little bit to accommodate more vacation time for current employees.
I, I think, probably, and I'll let the chiefs talk more to that. I think if, if we end up with vacant positions, that tends to drive a little bit, especially on the fire side, some, some part-time and a little bit of overtime there. As Mr. Mooney said, you know, he's, he's used to working in an environment where they have minimum staffing, and if you put in a leave request and it's beyond, you go, taken below minimum staffing, your leave request isn't going to be granted. And that's, you know, the, the, both the chiefs and lieutenant are all nodding, that's what they do now. I mean, it's, the priority is to be sure that fire trucks are fully staffed, and that there are, you know, we have minimum staffing in PD for safety. Yeah, but yeah, we'll absolutely come back with a deeper discussion of that, and the chiefs will be prepared to help me with that, so I don't mumble through it as I have today. The next thing we're recommending is to implement a retiree health supplement or stipend of $2,400 a year. To be clear, this is not retiree health insurance, so we're not saying, and I would not, I could not, in good conscience, stand up and recommend to the council that we implement a retiree health insurance plan. The liability that accrues with those mainly due to not the number of employees, but the cost of medical insurance, and that's what's driving really high liability numbers in cities and towns in North Carolina and elsewhere. I'm aware of a number of towns that have done away with retiree health just because of the liability. This is a little different in that it does not, so it's not dependent on what the cost of care is, or what the cost of health insurance is. It is a flat $2,400 per year, and you can see the eligibility, so it's someone that retires, so they have to be eligible for unreduced retirement under the local government employee retirement system. So you can see what those are, 65 with five years of service, 55 for police, 60 with 25 years of credible service, or 30 years of credible service at any age. We're recommending that, along with this, requiring, have someone have served the town to duck for 15 years. So, this isn't something that someone could come in, come in one year and the next year retire, and they get the supplement, or the stipend. It also would, we recommend that the employee be allowed to stay on the town's health insurance plan at their cost, not at ours, but at whatever our cost is, and a portion of that premium then would be deferred by the, by the stipend.
Drew, I'm going to make the same suggestion, that this one needs a deeper discussion, I think, with council also, and I know that Tony also mentioned that in his letter, but I, I think we need to have a, a deeper discussion on that one, because of the, obviously, there are continuing liabilities from it, and once again, it's not a short-term impact, so, you know, maybe we put this one in the same boat with the other one, on a poly discussion.
Yeah, there, so this is, in my mind, also a little, I mean, it's a little less emergent. If you look at the, excuse me, look at the information that I sent to you, I think the, the first... the first utilization of this under our, with our current staffing would be in fiscal twenty-eight. But again, so, we want, you know, we talked a little bit about retiree health when we adopted the new personnel policies two years ago, and there's actually a, a section reserved in the personnel policy for this. So, this is one of those conversations that we've been, we've been wanting to, to start. I really didn't expect that the council was gonna say, say, yeah, let's do this. But again, I just wanted, we wanted to present the whole package to say this is, this is what we're recommending as we're moving forward, and, and knowing that some of this has a budgetary impact, the ones that I had hung numbers on, some of it does not, but we, we want to have these conversations with council to the point where a decision is made by the elected body sooner rather than later. Again, just so we're positioned such that we're very competitive in the market in terms of, you know, not only salary, but in our benefit structure as well. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick clarifying question for me. I didn't realize you were allowed to stay on a health plan after you'd left. I mean, private sector, it's a Cobra thing, eighteen months, but is that public sector stuff?
So, you, you can, I mean, you can stay on your insurance, yes. It's what we've been told by our health insurance folks.
Oh, okay.
This is just really some financial assistance.
Right. And Cobra is something you, I mean, that's, that's something that you have to, that, so you have to offer that. The federal law says that, you know, you as an employer need to offer that to the employee that departs for a certain number of months, but from what we've been told, there's no prohibition against allowing people to stay at their cost.
Thank you.
Did I get that right, too? Okay. And this just shows kind of the utilization, so it starts in fiscal twenty-eight, it peaks in fiscal forty-five at about thirty-eight thousand for a year, and that's, this is based on the current, our current staffing, you know, projecting when someone would be eligible for retirement, and then the number of years between then and when they turn sixty-five and they're eligible for Medicare. But yeah, we'll have, we'll have a little more in-depth discussion about this as well. The next one was, and this is, this has a budgetary impact, actually a little less of budgetary impact initially, was a little more than double this. In order to try to get the budget balanced, we took a little bit out of here. So, this is a tuition assistance program. This is designed to help encourage folks to continue their education formally, and this, so this is not, this is not deputy chief actulette sending somebody to fire officer one school, because they, they're not expected to pay for that anyway on their own. He's, and Chief Black is gonna take that out of her budget and send them off on duty. This is if that same firefighter wants to pursue a degree, they can apply for this assistance, and it's, it shows here, it's $1,200 per fiscal year per employee, up to this max of ninety-six hundred. So, we're not budgeting that every, all forty employees are gonna take advantage of this. Just want to have some financial encouragement for folks that want to take additional classes, do additional coursework, and then sometimes finances are a little tight, and this is one of those things that would fall off of their, you know, out of their personal budget, and if we could help in some small way.
Does that last bullet mean they have to pay back to the town if in fact they fail?
Yes. You know, the, these programs, and I, I've worked in places before where we've had these, and they've been a tuition reimbursement program, and, and that works, assuming that people have cash flow, and that's, that's also a problem. So, you know, in listening to Heather James, who's the HR expert with the League of Municipalities, talk about some changes that she's seeing across the landscape and what cities are doing to try to be a little more employee-friendly, progressive, if you will, this is one of those things, is just, you're gonna get the money back. So, if Lori goes and takes a class, we give her $1,200 ahead of time, she doesn't pass it, she's either gonna write us a check or we're gonna get her money from her because we're gonna owe her money through payroll, so we're gonna, we're gonna deduct. Same thing if someone leaves, all right, they just say, okay, well, I've got my $1,200, I've started this class, now I'm gonna quit. You know, we've got, you know, their, their last paycheck, we've got accrued vacation time that would owe them, they would need to resolve the debt with us first, and that would all be structured into the agreement that they would sign. So, there, yeah, there is a clawback, and it's important to, is this here? Probably in the, oh, it does, second bullet. Employees are expected to pursue coursework outside regular work hours on their own time. So, if someone's working on a degree, we don't expect the police car to be parked at the police station and then in there doing online degree work while they're on duty. If you're here, you're working, but we'll give you a little money and maybe a little extra vacation time if we get that through, that they can work on their degree program. Any other questions about that?
We terminate him.
We get the money back. So, the, the eighth of, eight of the nine, so this is reclassifying the position of police lieutenant to police deputy chief. So, in the fire department, the second-in-command is a deputy chief. In the police department, the second-in-command is a lieutenant. Traditional police department structure is, you know, in small departments, you've got a chief, a deputy chief, captain, and then lieutenant. So, it's, it's kind of a, it's a little odd. You're not odd, Lieutenant Clark, the system is. In order to, and it's also a parody thing, you know, Southern Shore, Gilbert Hills, Maggshead all use the title of deputy chief, and it's parody within, within our organization. It doesn't change the pay grade, doesn't change the rate of pay, it just changes what's on the collar and what's on the title. And it really does reflect what's actually being done by the person in that position, what the expectation of the position is. It's really not, you know, it's not really, our lieutenant is not serving as a watch commander, which is normally what you would see in a, in a medium-sized police department, a lieutenant would be a watch commander. This lieutenant is serving as a deputy chief, and chief's not here acting as the chief, so it just makes sense. The other is, we wanna change the grades, we'll change the grade of two of our master police officers to corporal, so they would move up a grade, so that comes with a, when you move up a grade, that's a five percent pay increase. The idea here is to be sure that there is somebody of a supervisory rank kind of on the street more often or more hours than the sergeants are. And I'm just, chief, would you mind, I'm gonna drink a little coffee, would you mind explaining this in a little bit?
Sure.
You didn't know I was gonna do this, I'm sorry. You're ready.
So, we certainly have a smaller rank structure than, than a lot of departments have, so people wear multiple hats. We put a lot on the sergeants to do, and a larger part of their duty is administrative. So, in order for them to do that, and by administrative, I mean they have to go back and watch body camera footage, and that takes a lot of time, just as an example of something they may be stuck in the office doing. So, by creating the corporals, we're able to put them on the mid-shift, which works a 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM time slot, would allow them to work equally with the day shift and the night shift on their squad, and they'd be able to take on a greater supervisory role. They'd be able to be mentors, they would be in charge of a weekly training regiment that we can implement, roll call training daily, they oversee the department's field training program directly, but more, it puts an experienced, mature officer out there as close to twenty-four hours a day as we can get. So, that's the real, the real thing behind it, and to be eligible for this position, you'd have to already hold master police officer rank, which is the highest level on our career development chart. So, there would be three officers currently that would be eligible to apply for these positions.
Thanks, chief. Any, any questions about this?
The dollar of value that you've established, that eighty-three twenty-five, is based on what?
So, that's the, the delta between the current salary of the MPOs and the, what they would get as corporal.
Per employee?
Total.
Okay.
Two employees.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there any reason, Drew, why we wouldn't do that now versus waiting till July one? I mean, minimal impact, but good impact for the employees.
It requires a modification of the, of the pay and classification plan, which is typically what we roll in. So, yeah, we'd be talking about a month, a month and a half difference really by the time we get to that. So, you know, this is something that was proposed as part of the, as part of the budgetary process, and really the, the same thing with the, with the deputy chief's position, it's just-
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we, and we, we tried, unless there's something really emergent, not to bring changes in the classification system other than at the, at the time of the budget. It's not emergent, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also been hampered with the vacancy, really get that filled in order to be able to move those personnel issues.
It seems to me it's something that we wouldn't have to wait till July one to take action now, that and the deputy chief.
But I think going along with what you just said, a comprehensive change to the personnel pay rate and everything else, it's like extra work, unless it's hampering your recruitment efforts, that would be my only.
I think that his recruitment effort is, go back to the vacation days, that they come from another police force, that they lose, start over from the ground one. If we're gonna pass this one because of recruitment, we should pass the other one at the same time.
They do save time.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're, I mean, the, the operation of the police department is an impact of, this is just one of those, and talking with the chief, and this is one of those next step, this is, this is kind of the next, the next thing we wanna do. It also, I think, you know, hearing that conversation tells the chief, all right, maybe I need to start planning for this and figuring out what his process is gonna be for selection and so on, so that when the budget is approved and, and takes effect on, on July one, those promotions can happen pretty much immediately. I mean, we, we could fund the positions and everything right now, but I, I'm hoping he wouldn't just leave, be able to leave here and say, okay, you and you, you're up. As he said, he's got three people that are eligible, so there is, there's a selection process, and, you know, could it be that you only find one? You never know. So, it, it needs to, unlikely, I mean, knowing the, the quality of the folks that we have, but I, I think we're comfortable with the, with the July one effectiveness, but thank you for that, mayor. Okay, moving right along. So, these are the nine items, again, the only ones that really come with dollars attached to them are the current dollars, the eight-and-a-half percent increase, it shows about 276,000, and that's fully loaded. The tuition assistance program, ninety-six hundred, and then this changing the grade and doing, and making two MPOs as corporals, about eighty-three hundred dollars. All of those numbers are included in the draft budget that you have, so all of that's in there right now.
The ninety-six hundred is just how many people you might assume would take advantage of it? It's just a guess, or it's a max, like you-
Yeah, so it, it was, it was a modified guess, so that, I think we, originally as, as department directors, we guessed a little bit higher. It's one of the places that we needed, and we were able to save like $10,000 trying to get the budget to balance a little bit. And being, being something brand new, we don't know what the uptake is gonna be. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to spend at least that and then be able to tell people, you know, you didn't get it this year, but, you know, apply next year. Any other questions on personnel? You said this was gonna take a little time, mayor. All right, so, debt service, I'm not gonna spend any time on debt service unless you want to, you don't have a choice. You gotta, you have, you have to pay your debts. This just shows you what you're paying for and what the debt service payments are gonna be in this coming year. You know, one of the questions that I've been asked, actually from a couple of places, is should we pay off the fire engine a little early? We're making more money on our money than we're paying, so it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to do that, and the same thing with the, especially with the town hall, town park refinance, so we're, we're a few, just a few years from retiring that, and you recall that we were able to negotiate a lower interest rate when the interest rates were really low, so we're making a lot more money on our money than that 1.25 percent. So, it really doesn't make much sense to, to try to advance fund any of this debt. Total debt service, about 3.4 million. The biggest chunk of that is that one-year special obligation bond that we got to for the FEMA portion of our beach nourishment. And this chart just shows kind of what the future looks like as well in terms of debt service. Any questions about debt service?
Just that the special obligation bond, which we have to kind of budget for every year when we're not using it, is just the interest amount? Is that what we, is that the, is that, is it costing us more than the 62,000 a year? Do we have to pay like an, there was some adjustment we had to do when we realized we were going over. Is it just the interest or?
So, until, until we receive reimbursement from FEMA and can retire that debt, it's, it is just interest. So, it just, it basically rolls forward. The way that, that bond is structured is we have one more renewal. So, we, we've exercised one, one renewal or one extension. You did that December, I guess we did that, kind of all, it all runs together. So, we'll be requesting, we may have to request another renewal depending on how fast the FEMA money comes back. So, it's, we need to finish the, the nourishment project, all the invoices need to come in, and we need to close the project, and then we say to FEMA, here, we're done. And, you know, CPE helps us with, with those pay applications and all that kind of stuff, so we'll be able to give that to FEMA, and then FEMA works at the speed of the federal government, so reimbursement doesn't happen the next day. So, we need to be prepared for the fact that we may end up having to pay a little more, or renew for, for a shortage.
And it's not like you have to pay to renew, and you pay the interest, you just pay the interest.
Just pay the interest.
And, and ask for the renewal.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What about the FEMA brick grant? When, don't we have to upfront that FEMA money?
Yes.
But we haven't projected that out yet?
I, I, I don't anticipate issuing debt for that. That, that construction window is gonna be fairly, fairly narrow, and so we're anticipating being able to get through, so the brick or the FEMA portion of that is, and the DEM money is funding the highway portion of that, all that's gonna get done, it has to be done by Memorial Day next year, before Memorial Day next year. So, my plan right now, unless we end up with a major storm and a cash flow problem, is to fund that out of what we have in reserve. We've got fund balance is seven, seven million? We've got, we've got more than enough money in fund balance to, to basically float until we get the reimbursement back from, from the grant funding agencies. So, I'm not projecting any debt. That's subject to change, and I will, I'll stand back up here and say, hey, you know, when I said we weren't planning, well, plans have changed and we need to issue some debt. But again, I don't, I don't believe we need to.
And the beach nourishment, does the county take care of the FEMA stuff for us, or do we have to take care of it?
Yes.
That's the answer.
So, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, yeah, everyone and, you know, and the engineer, you know, CPE's got a piece of that, too, to try to keep- got a piece of that too, to try to keep it all, keep all the paperwork in order. Ultimately, the request will come from us. Because it's, it was a grant that was given to the town of Duck for Hurricane Dorian.
Okay, now if we have a problem with weeks since January, will FEMA look, how will FEMA look at that, or you're not sure?
The grant's still there, so they've not said, hey, you need to spend that money by tomorrow. They're aware of where that project stands. There are other towns that are in this four-town project that have FEMA money as well for Dorian, so we're fine with FEMA. Yeah, thank you, Joe. Yeah, we had to request, we had to request an extension.
Okay.
So that, and that, it's an extension for construction, so they're, you know, they're aware of what's going on with that.
This is off the chart, but the radios are working well. They were pricey. Yeah, okay, great.
We don't need to do it yet?
When I saw that the other day, I was like, whoa, I forgot how much those things cost. But we needed them and we had to have them, so I'm glad they're working, that you can hear each other from Sanderling to everywhere that you need to go. That's what we need.
Any other questions on debt service? So council, you have, and the next thing we'll talk about is capital, and I'm not gonna try to read this to you. You have, I think you've got this in front of you. So you'll see in this, in this table here, the capital projects that are in the CIP and were originally reflected in that, in the budget, the gross niche budget that we're over a million dollars out. And you can see there's a column that says cut, that's what we've removed from the budget. I don't believe that we have removed anything that is critical, submission critical. I don't believe we've removed anything that was reflected as a high priority in the strategic planning and vision twenty-thirty-two processes. The one that you may question is the town park shoreline protection. That one is cut realistically, so we want to, we want to start kind of now-ish on the engineering portion of that. The likelihood that we'd be able to get to construction in the next fiscal year, knowing how quick the regulators work, it's not as likely that we'd be able to get to construction. So we're comfortable pushing that for a year. So that gained us four-hundred-and-forty thousand very quickly, and you can see some smaller ones, the neighborhood storm water management, that's just the price difference based on what we're hearing now from our engineers. And some of the other stuff is what department director said, you know, we can push that off. Fire said we can do half of the MDTs this coming year and half of the following. Video camera network projects, so that's a, just basically we're able to scale that back. The restroom addition to the maintenance shop, that needs a little more, I believe, a little more thought. And we need to look more globally at what we're doing for restrooms in this park facility. The playground expansion design, something that we want to do, it's non-emergent. The playground equipment is fully functional, works well, but we keep that project in our CIP. It's something that we want to do at some point to be able to expand what we have there. The other one is the video surveillance system, that's replacing the security cameras in the town hall, and that's one of the things we know that we need to do. Again, not, we don't believe it's, I don't believe it's terribly critical that we do it this coming fiscal year. We do need to do it at some point. And then the same thing in operations, so we looked at some of the otter, or the one-offs really, in operations, and we're able to trim some here. The environmental protection, neighborhood storm water management, I mentioned that at the beginning, there was a change in the, where the design money is, so that's in that, and now in the capital, so we didn't need it in operations. Some 5G failovers, that's a good to have, not necessary. We have failover for our fiber now, but we'll be talking a little bit more about that towards the end of this meeting. The other big one is the northern boardwalk extension, that's a hundred thousand dollars for design. We can push that out another year. I think, you know, once we see the resort realty, that property's getting redeveloped, we really need to be taking seriously the, our design effort there, and that's, that's not coming in at this point. So that's just, that's what we've removed in order to get to the four something, so from a million to that four something.
Question?
Yes.
Could you just speak to the public safety building in general and how it, because in my mind, I know we didn't cut it out of the capital approval project, that's because we didn't necessarily have it in this year, a replacement building. We've kind of taken that out of the budget after, over the last couple of years as opposed to a placeholder. And I, on the public build, safety building repair line, there's no dollar value there. So can you just talk about that in general?
Yeah, so that was my mistake in this graphic. So that's a hundred-and-sixty thousand, and you're gonna see that at the end of the meeting. So that one-sixty is in that four-hundred thousand, so that, my mistake on that one, but should have been there.
Wait, the one-sixty goes in the cost line of the public building repair?
Correct.
In the cost, but not the cut?
Correct, right, yeah. So we plan, you spoiled the surprise at the end, so we want to do that now. We want to do that this fiscal year with some of the surplus, so...
I'm messing up your flow here, I'm sorry.
No, that's, no, that was my error when I put this graphic in there. This just shows the expenditures by department. And I can go through each individual department. The mayor's shaking his head.
Wow.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Whitman, I know you wanted to be out by two. We're running a little over. You all have all the department worksheets, so I'm just gonna hit these, and stop me when you got a question. So governing body, biggest difference here, we need to do an election that we have to pay for, so we pay the board of elections for that. Larger difference, other than personnel costs and administration, is tuition, sorry, tuition assistance program is reflected here. Finance, again, this is just the fees that we pay to Derrick County for collecting taxes and to some bank fees, you know, thanks to Ms. Barnes, a lot of our bank fees are now offset by interest. We've got, our main checking account is now interest-bearing.
Where is our finance officer? In that, in finance or in administration?
So I'm the finance officer, so it's in administration.
Oh, okay, then, where's Jessica?
Oh, Jessica's in administration. That's, so Jessica and I talked about this yesterday. Next year, when you see your budget, we're probably gonna put her in finance and probably retitle that finance and human resources, that department. And we're gonna likely retitle the recreation and special events. We'll retitle that as communications and special events and move Kay and Betsy into that and all those, you know, all the events-related costs. Because some of them are events, but then you look at, in administration, we're paying for licensing, particularly like for all the music licenses and the license to play movies or in admin. We're just trying to, we'll try to do that in the next fiscal year for y'all. Legal is our contract attorney. No change in the monthly retainer, some small changes in the rates, the hourly rates for additional work that needs to get done. And that, so last year, there were no increases, this year, there's a little bit of an increase. Public facilities, Kim Pittman's in this department. I'm not gonna go through all this detail. The ten-thousand-six-fifty in part-time, we, this year, we rebid because it was, the contracts were up for the park lawn maintenance, if you will, and then the boardwalk maintain, the kind of the bushes along the boardwalk and the boardwalk trash and the, the village area here, the long duck trail, that's in streets. But all those were rebid. We received four bids. The town was one of the bidders. So we actually provided a sealed bid for all of that work. I think it kind of shocked one of the vendors a little bit. We do that mainly to kind of sanity check what the, what the private sector's doing. We were not the low bid on the contracts. We were on, we were on one that it just didn't make sense for us to do, but where we were the significant low bidder by half, or less than half actually, was to empty the trash on the boardwalk. So we are going to self-perform that rather than contracting that. That contract price, the contract begins January one, was gonna go up to twenty-one thousand dollars just to do, check trash cans and empty them. So we're gonna self-perform, so that ten thousand dollars reflects half a fiscal year's worth of that contract. We're still budgeting to spend that money, and we're just going to be able to use that to give Kim an additional set of hands. And I would expect when we come in fiscal twenty-five, that that part-time will be the, pretty much that, you know, double that. And again, we just want to be able to give Kim a little more consistency in terms of assistance there, because, you know, one of the higher priorities of the council was to maintain our facilities, and it's a lot for one human being to try to keep up with. He does a good job, but he needs, he needs some help. So that's, that's the plan there. What else? So in the repairs and maintenance here, Mayor Protem, you see that this is a one-sixty-nine, so that one-sixty is here for the public safety building. Also, we left in the budget to start working towards replacing the irrigation system, and that, this first year will involve drilling a new and deeper well. So hopefully, we can get the well deep enough so we're not getting as much, much discoloration coming out of the water. Information technology, this one actually goes down a little bit, and this is based on just what Shoshin has quoted and really what we're seeing. And my guess is, I think, you know, we've estimated that we're gonna finish the year just a little under budget. I think that is a little, that estimate may be a little high. So based on what Shoshin has quoted, and we were able to peel off some stuff from their quote that we're just not gonna do, I'm comfortable with that number. So this is really just for the contracted services related to our IT infrastructure and also for our telephone and cable.
Go back to my earlier question, Drew. Is Shoshin capable of solving your transmission problem here?
Yeah, so, so Shoshin was contacted when we had the issue, and they've made adjustments to bandwidth. Yeah, they, they have the capability to do it, yes. This, what's happening today is not a Shoshin issue. Any questions anyone had on police? I'm not gonna go through these step-by-step. Any questions on fire? There is a small increase in the subsidies is what we, the amount that we pay to, to the volunteer fire department. They, they experienced this year on their budget, not, not ours for the fire department, but in their budget, some fairly significant cost overruns in terms of vehicle maintenance. They, they, they're not, they're not trying to make it up in this coming year. They were able to, they were able to find the money. I don't know how they did it, but that's, that's on them. They did a good job managing that, but, you know, with the costs escalating, so that's just reflecting...
Do we have a date for the delivery of Engine Eleven?
We don't have an exact date, but what I do have out of them is it's staying on schedule. I think he was looking at roughly twelve months out, twelve to fourteen months out a couple of months ago when I had inquired to that. We are looking at a September pre-construction date, which is a meeting that we'll have with the manufacturer, so that kind of indicates where we're at in the process there. I think it's anywhere from six to eight months from, from pre-construction typically.
And we accounted it all for the resale of Engine One-Eleven now? So that's not in the budget?
Yep.
I do, that engine repair and maintenance of twenty-five thousand, is that all the one we're having replaced, or is that all, everything we have? Second from the bottom.
Second from the bottom, debt service.
Twenty-five thousand?
Which department are you in?
Fire.
Fire.
Expenditures.
Oh, there. Oh, okay, thank you. So, yeah, this is, yeah, that's vehicle repair maintenance. So this is the fire department subsidy, this is the, so we give them a quarterly check and they manage that. Can you speak to that at all, deputy chief?
I guess my question is, do we own any of those trucks that are there now? And is this twenty-five thousand what we spent last year on all the trucks or the one that's broken all the time?
I'll let Drew speak to the ownership piece.
We own two trucks, the one the deputy chief drives and the one that the chief drives.
The repairs and maintenance piece, that was the, that twenty-five thousand number that you see there was the budget number for that, and we exceeded that by, I believe, July fifteenth. A little exaggeration there, but we, we well exceeded that number, and that's where that increase is coming from. I don't have with me the exact number of where we're at. I'll be sure to have the chief get that, but...
But that's all four trucks that are there?
Yes. Yep.
The, this is, I just wanted, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but the CIP items that you shaved off, were they really to do with the fire department in terms of some of those hoses and everything that I saw that we had to cut? And is that gonna mess up? I know we've been kind of drilled into a completely consistent, you know, ongoing replacement of stuff. Is that, is that affecting anything here or...
The, so Chief Black, that's one of the things she said they could hold a year on. So what, so what was cut, so the way the process works is when, you know, we get in everything and I say that's too much, and say to the chiefs and the department directors, all right, try again. You know, I'm a million dollars out, what do you got? And then they, they prioritize internally based on the needs of their department and say, we can sacrifice this, this year, but we can't live without it forever, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And then inspections, the only kind of one-off here is we've done a couple of things. One is, we did increase the permitting software. We only had two seats for that, and we needed, we needed to be able to have four people into that at the same time, so that's increased. And then scheduled replacement for the laptop that the building inspector uses, and that is his, that's his primary device, that's the one he uses at his desktop as well. Ocean Rescue, this is, the increase here is based on that, on the contract, so we remember in last, time's fun when you have flies, two months ago, we increased the budget or the contract amount for Ocean Rescue. Mr. DeBroski will be here at your May, your May meeting to have that conversation with you that you all had asked for. So that's just the change in the contract amount, and that's, that's the increased contract amount change. That's reflected, the increase that was made by the council in that motion. Streets and highways, this one, you know, we... Streets and highways, this one, you know, we continue to carry the brick project here. You know, you can see that obviously the estimate for this year is $459,000 as opposed to the budget of 2.9 million. And that's just primarily reflective of that brick project. And I did mention that we, the contracted services, we rebid that and this, that contract amount is reflected, you know, the new contract amount is reflected in this budget. And they all, all those contract amounts went up a little bit as you would expect that they would. Sanitation, so these are this is based on the new rates or the rates from the new contracts. So you awarded that bid or those contracts at your last meeting. These take effect on October 1. So this budget reflects that increase on October 1. Environmental protection, you know, we talked a little bit about some of the changes that were made here. But this is just primarily, it's the professional services related to engineering for beach nourishment and then for the work we want to do here in the town park. And also the stormwater management work, the neighborhood stormwater management. That's as a result of the RCCP process that Joe and his team have been managing and you've been updated on. You're also going to be hearing more about RCCP projects at your May meeting. I think both Mr. Wilson and Mr. Hines will be here to have a conversation with y'all, give you an update. Community development, so this is, and we do pay for the planning board and Board of Adjustment here. And then, you know, see what the personnel allocations are. There's really not a whole lot of one off here. Does, we have the training in there for the folks that are in the community development department. And Joe's laptop is scheduled for replacement this year. Again, that's, that's his primary device. So that's also, it also serves as his desktop computer. That's the model we're going to, we're going to try and get away from multiple devices. So everyone's got, similar to what I do, a laptop that also serves as a desktop. So we're maintaining less, less devices. And also, if we need to bug out in case of emergency, people have their desktop computer really to take home. Recreation, special events is special events primarily. So, and then, you know, obviously the merchandise for resale gets purchased out of here as well. So total about 9.7% increase in the budget. Again, we're out of balance for now. Any other questions on the expenditure side? So this is just, this just shows the progression year over year. The dash line at the top, the yellow, is just the total budget. Red line is the, is the number of personnel. So not the personnel cost, but the number of personnel. It's one of those things we were asked to put on this to track year over year.
Drew?
Yes, sir.
Before we leave expenditures, two things if you can remind council. Number one, the actual memory lane brick project, which obviously collected a lot of money and it wasn't as great expense. How are we dealing with that in the budget? And secondly, and you and I have talked about this, but I'm not sure council understands, how are we dealing with the Buffalo Head rental property?
So the Buffalo Head rental property is its own account. So that's not reflected at all in the budget. So that has its own, its own account that you'll be getting reports on revenue and expenditure. So that doesn't, doesn't hit our general checking account and it's not budgeted for here. We will need to come at some point with a budget for that, but it's not part of the general fund budget. So complete, we want to keep that separate from, from the other revenue. So that's that, the memory lane, the revenue for that comes in. And revenue as in miscellaneous revenue other? No, you, we have a separate line. So in your monthly report, there is actually a separate line. It's aggregated in the, in the budget. It's aggregated into miscellaneous other. The expenditures are in public facilities, supplies and materials. Right. So she, because she's not on mic, I'll say, so we're already getting orders for bricks that we won't purchase until fiscal '24. So we're, that revenue is coming in as a, it's called, it's a prepaid revenue. And that'll, Jessica and Teresa will work their magic in the books, but that'll be reflected as a fiscal '24 revenue.
So when we do the audit at the end of the year, the Buffalo Head property revenue and expenditures will get floated into the total town results?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, but still, it's still a town, it's still a town entity. We just need to, you'll be, you'll be getting a budget that you'll need to approve. But yes, it will be part of the audit. Yeah, we, it's public funds, so we can't, we can't completely separate it from our total financial picture. It's not part of this. It's not part of any of the revenue or any of the expenditures in the, in the general fund. It's a special fund. Expenditures by type, revenue by type. We covered all that. So, okay, so we're, we're short. Talk about fund balance, where we are now. So this obviously takes us to the, our projections at the end of the current fiscal year. Everything works out the way we think it's going to work out. We should end the year at about 80% fund balance. And with your unassigned fund balance growing by about 758, 759,000. So we'll end up with a little over $8 million in unassigned fund balance. That's after purchasing the police cars. So we're ending up with a fairly sizable surplus. I'm not going to go in unless you really want me to get into the five-year forecast. You have it. I think it's fairly conservative on both sides. So it's conservative on the, on the revenue side. We're not trying to overestimate what we're going to get for revenue. And I think we're probably overshooting a little bit on expenditures in terms of inflationary pressure in the future. Because it's hard to tell, at least for me as a non-economist, to try to figure out what, what the inflationary pressures are going to be two years from now, let alone five. So it really, it's a, it's a good model to have and it's something worth looking at. But it's not something, I don't get to this chart here. I don't get overly concerned by the spread. So the red, the red dash is in the future and that's expenditure. The green dash that's on the bottom is revenue in the future. I'm not really that concerned with that spread. Again, because I think we probably are underselling revenue and overselling expenditure. So it should be a little bit tighter. But it's something we really need to be paying attention to. You're kind of the long, the long-term financial picture. This just shows you, and you have this in front of you, the different components. So it's the expenditures by type that you saw earlier in your budget. The blue line on the top is personnel expenditures. Operating expenditures are the red line, is, are the red line, is the red line. What is not factored into this is the future construction of the public safety facility. That's not included.
That's a huge thing that's not reflected here. I mean, I like to just stop right there and just make a point of that because it's really helpful to see this, but without that. And so I'm really hoping next year, well, I guess, I mean, this year, we're going to be able to refine something there because, you know, there have been past budgets in years gone by before you were even here where it was included, included, included. Everyone was like, what's all this money and da, da, da? And you're like, oh, it's just a placeholder. And now we don't have it as a placeholder. And personally, I'm having a little issue with that because we placeholder it, held it for so long. And now we're not even showing it on this, so.
So the line on this particular graph that that would impact is the purple line that is second from the bottom, debt service. So that, that'll be, that'll be debt funded. So you're, at that point, your debt, your debt profile will change. So you'll end up paying a little more in debt service. We're not going to, we're not going to try to cash finance something that's probably going to be in excess of 8 million. We will need to likely write a check initially to do the design, you know, and the architect piece of it.
Capital?
Professional services, but we can, it'd be, yeah, it would be in the capital. I'd probably put it in the capital line here, yes.
Capital line would adjust and the purple debt line would adjust.
Would adjust once we issue debt for that.
Draw some lines on my paper.
Hey Monica, wasn't that money just put in there for design purposes? That $350,000 every year?
No, I think we had more than that in there and I have to go back and look. But we really did hold like millions, we put millions of dollars in there.
I thought it was only 350,000 we took, you guys took out. I wasn't counsel yet.
It was actually, it was 450,000. I think we showed the public safety building in the capital plan, but it was out years.
Right.
That's where you got the 6 million.
Okay.
But the 450 is what we rule every year.
Okay. And then I think it was two years ago we decided not to. I feel better about that then. So we don't even, we don't have the 450 in there either or whatever. Because, I mean, we did expend some design money, but we're not, we're going to reset the clock on all that.
Yeah, and it is in the, it's in the CIP. So that, that project still is in the CIP. So that, that expenditure for design and the expenditure for construction still remains in the capital improvement plan. It's just not brought into what we know in terms of what we're going to spend money on.
And that would, not to beat a dead horse, but that would indicate that we're not talking about it. I mean, we're not showing it, but we're thinking about it because we would like it to be in the five-year forecast. Because we think we can start it in less than five years.
Lord willing, yes. Yes, I believe that we will be starting it within five years. You know, and I can throw numbers at it, but they'd be less accurate than what's already a little squishy in this forecast.
This is where, this is real stuff and the public safety building is, you know, the elephant in the room or whatever. But as long as we continue to talk about it, I, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, we do keep that. We do keep it in the CIP and we will be talking about it actually at your meeting in May because I'm going to become asking for, I'm going to come asking for $10,000. We'll, we'll talk about that when we get there in May. So we're $442,000 out. And we have this surplus, so I'm going to So last year, when we got to this point, we threw up an Excel sheet and we said, okay, what do you want to do? I took some advice from at least one member of the council. Rather than saying, what do you want to do? Being a little audacious to say, this is what we recommend we do. So we have a surplus, like we did coming into this fiscal year when we had an anticipated surplus last year. We bought a fire truck and then we advanced a number of projects into, into the prior year. Got the money encumbered, they're not all done yet. One of them was the stairs on the side of the, of the town hall. But we encumbered the money in the last year to reduce the amount of money that was going into fund balance. So we're, we're proposing to do the same thing. And what, so what you have, you've got two pages here. One that says capital and one that says operations. So in order to balance the budget, you already see what's been cut. What we're recommending is, where it says to fiscal '23, is to use some of the surplus and do these projects this fiscal year. And when I say do them, I mean, get the money, get a purchase order issued, the money encumbered. So it does not then impact your fiscal '24 budget. So those expenditures don't end up staying there. We can talk about each one of these individually. We can talk about them as a group. These are all projects and expenditures that the department leadership believes that we can get moving and encumbered before the end of this fiscal year. If we were to do all of these as proposed, we start out with 759,000, recommending here about $479,000 worth of expenditures. We would still then add wow, that's ugly. We would still add $280,000 to fund balance. I'm not sure why that did that, but PowerPoint's acting up a little bit. But you can see then we'd still be about 7.7 million at the end of fiscal '23. That's what we're projecting for unassigned fund balance. We're adding more than a quarter million dollars to it. We're still at over 75% on, you know, the percentage of unassigned fund balance. And, get off this slide, it's ugly. It puts us then $36,000 to the good in the budget. So the budget is then, if, if the council will say, yep, we can do this, which will mean we'll come back to you with a budget amendment for fiscal '23 to include these projects, realize the additional revenue that we anticipate getting. So your fiscal '23 budget would still remain balanced. We would get this work done. That 35 or 36,000 really is kind of in the noise. I'll, I'll get it balanced down, it has to be balanced down to the dollar anyway. So before you see it come to public hearing. Yes?
You get the 478 by adding the 122.2 and the 356?
Yep.
The ones that you have said to fiscal year '23 are
Correct.
Effectively were either in the, they were in the cut column and now they're in the?
No, so they, they were in the, in the expenditure column. So they, they remained in
They're in the, okay. They're the one that does the tie. Okay.
Right. So in order, so that cost, so that first column is what's in the draft budget. That's 400 and something thousand dollars out of, out of balance. By, and by moving them into this year, it enables us to balance your fiscal '24 budget. That's ugly. So the question is, did we get the right ones? Is there, is there something that we've cut that you think we need to do? Is there something we're proposing to move to fiscal '23 you don't think we should do? Do you not think we should move anything to fiscal '23? So those are, those are the questions. And, you know, absent that, we need to go back through and look at more, more cuts. So be, you know, less in terms of projects getting done.
True, one cent is worth about $186,000 to us. That's just an ad valorem. That could also give us additional revenue, correct? From all the occupancy and all the other splits. Or would that be not recognized to the following year? Wouldn't be recognized, I guess, to the following year, right? If we raise taxes?
Oh, if you raise taxes.
Yeah, say if you raise taxes one cent.
Yep.
That, that would not really reflect in occupancy and that until the following fiscal year.
Right.
Yeah, so the only thing we'd get from that would be an ad valorem. What would be the average increase, maybe you don't know this, but average increase for a household on that one cent increase? You'd have, I know you'd have to go back and figure that, I mean.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a fairly, it's, I've actually got a spreadsheet that will do that. And the only reason that I don't have a slide there is because we hadn't even dreamed of proposing a tax increase.
I mean, what's, what's the value of our property, 1.8 billion or something like that?
Round numbers.
Average, I know that there, there are some really good spreadsheets that show if your price is this or that. But of course, everything has gone up a little bit, so that'll change a bit, you know, based on ad valorem being like with, after the new revaluation, the numbers are going to be higher. So 1% or 1 cent would be a little more detrimental. But we've done that before whenever we've.
Right.
Probably on the average.
Two years ago, when we came in here to do a tax increase, I showed you what that tax increase was. tax increase was, what the tax bill change would be for, you know, probably two dozen different valuations. Happy to do that, I, we just hadn't talked about...
I was just curious, because, I mean, we're attacking the expenditure side, we didn't really look at the revenue side, which could be conservative. But if it's, you know, 186,000, probably be like, average household would be like a hundred-dollar increase, I think.
Well, that...
186 into 1.8 billion or whatever.
I mean, it'd probably take me about three minutes to find it. I've got it on my computer there somewhere, but...
I'm curious, that's all.
And, you know, I can generate that chart and send it out to council. Again, you know, just based on what we hear, heard out of the strategic planning sessions is, hey, let's keep the tax rate where it is, or, actually, it said low, it said no or low tax increase, and...
I don't, I think it said, I think it said maintain or something like that. I was not...
Sorry, it was maintain the fund balance and lower no tax increase. I think that was the, Jessica's nodding too, that was the wording of that, so...
There were a lot of stars on that line.
Yes, there were.
I noticed. But, I don't know, talking about taxes and stuff, it seems to me that when we get to the point of the building, you know, much like beach nourishment, it's sort of like, hey, this is, you know, this is something that the town has to buy, I don't know. But I don't know, if you're saying debt service, maybe it's manageable, but that, to me, is the, is the next big hurdle for this town. I could be wrong.
It's great we're going though, but we'll have this building and the park paid off.
Park's already paid off.
And we've got another three, three years on that line.
On the park?
No, the park's...
That's what I said, buildings, park is paid, building is not paid.
Well, yeah, okay.
It's just a building, town hall.
I thought you got it listed wrong.
Yeah, this property is left with a building, yeah.
And this, this piece, yeah.
Debt service.
But you're right, and that's a, that's not a, that's nice to have that.
Town hall, park, refinance.
But that was one, it's a small, it's...
So, you know...
616,000 right now, and it's got 26 to go.
Right.
So two more years after this year, coming up.
When you pay what?
133,333.
It's a relatively, it's a relatively small amount because the interest rate's low. The reality is, you know, as, you know, we're seeing inflation at north of 6%, we're seeing some growth in other revenues. If inflation keeps going up and your sales tax and your occupancy tax don't keep up with that, really, the only lever you have to pull is ad valorem. And, you know, so at that point, you are, you're really attacking on the expenditure side, but then you're also looking at what do we need to do in terms of your tax rate adjustment? You know, we're seeing decent growth in the tax base, not huge growth, and it's something like half a percent, but we don't have tons of vacant land where people are going to come and put, you know, one and a half, two million dollar houses on. There are some vacant lots, there's not enough to bank on for the long term. So that, for a lot of reasons, I just, I, the timing of thinking about a tax increase, there are ways to get your budget balanced without having to pull that lever now, you know. When the public safety building, when we do that, you're going to have to consider where are you going to get the revenue from.
And I'd just like to say, too, just one other point that goes along with this in terms of changes and things, that this personnel piece, the fact that we added all the personnel and public safety, you know, it's, we're kind of digesting that now, and the town has become, if you were going to show a maturity, you know, we're, we are staffed, and we spent quite a bit of time talking about that very valued staff and what we need to do to keep it and foster good staff and keep going with that. So to me, allowing that to normalize a little bit more, too, just to see where this all goes in terms of expenditures, because we knew, not only did we have to pay for those extra salaries, but now, you know, fringe benefits and everything, and now keeping up with inflation, so that's a big chunk. And that's why I do appreciate you breaking it out into like personnel versus operating versus, so, because it really does show you how much is invested in that, in the personnel that we have. So I would, I would, I like the idea of knowing what you can, those questions that you're asking, but I'm not in favor of any tax increase for this year, just based on everything I just said. Thank you for coming up with your ideas on what to cut and move.
Did Tony see this list?
Yes.
What was his reaction?
I think that the term he used is, it's almost soup.
Okay.
It's almost soup. So he, I think, you know, as, we got to the point in the conversation, which was a little bit shorter than this one tonight, or this afternoon, so we got to the point where we said, okay, we're still out of balance, and he said, well, do we need to, do we need to cut more? I said, well, we can either do that or do this, and I showed him and went through this list. And I think you need to digest the list with the fact that we're still adding to fund balance. So we're not at all proposing that we reduce the amount of money that are, that's in the savings account. We're proposing to increase it, balance the budget, and still get work done that you can point to, and that actually meets some of the goals of the council. So, yeah, he was, basically said, well, you've got it done. And, yeah. And that's what we wanted, what I wanted to bring to you all is, I wanted to, you know, say, you know, we think it's done, this is what we're recommending, what do you all think?
Now, the way this works, actually, because we probably could not do all of this the next couple of months, what we do is just reallocate in the next year's plan.
So it doesn't hit next, so it might hit next year's work plan, but all the money would be encumbered, so...
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so a purchase order would be issued, and what you would see in the next year, you would see some carryover that, so we would end up amending the next year budget after it's been approved with whatever we haven't been able to finish.
Yep.
It would show, like this year's budget does, there's, there was an appropriation of fund balance that was in excess of what we already, we'd appropriated 20,000 in this, in fiscal '23's budget. That number now is greater because there was, what's called purchase order carryover that Jessica will bring to you in the budget amendment that would be appropriation of fund balance.
I think one of the things that concerns me is, because we don't have any kind of knowledge on the other towns or the county, you know, we could really, if we had to take a defensive move this year to protect the following year, you know, we don't know what that impact would be, and it's kind of impossible, actually, even forecast what it would be. But it could be significant based upon, you know, what the other towns are doing.
Yeah, and again, I've not, and I don't know if you have from the mayor's, any, again, I'll be, I'll be shocked if we see a lot of movement in tax rates. Have you heard anything in public meetings, Mr. Hobbs?
No, I have not. I think NAGS had had their budget workshop today, but I didn't stay for that.
They couldn't send us by. I'll see Mr. Garmin tomorrow, so I'll, you know, and, you know, when I meet or have lunch with the managers tomorrow, I'll just kind of get a sense of where they are. I don't, I just don't see that anyone's going to be making a big swing.
Well, it makes sense to take this list and move this forward, balance the budget, move it to the public hearing, and then let's, maybe we'll have more intelligence, may one, and maybe in fact, we'll have to do some adjustments, one way or the other. I mean, this is a good list, and, you know, staff knows best, you know, how to prioritize.
I'm going to need a little time to digest this list, but I agree with you, having a public hearing set and having an opportunity to dig into this and ask a few questions if anything rises to that. I mean, basically, what we're hearing from you is, in the two, the fiscal year, to move things to this current fiscal year are things that you and the department heads have said were the priorities and made sense in terms of just operations, goals, et cetera. You've taken this list, you've made the priorities, which I appreciate, because we could sat here for the next hour, and it's beneficial to have your input as the department heads, and so I...
It's a really, I mean, we've sacrificed what we believe we can sacrifice, so that's that cut column. And then, you know, we can move stuff around, but in terms of what we can bring into this year, you can move different, so if you see something else in the budget you think we can move to this year, we just need to be sure that the dollars don't butt up against practicality. Matter of fact, there was, there was a different project that I had suggested that we could move into this year, and having a department director meeting, I asked Mr. Hurd, can we get this moving by the end of this fiscal year? And he said, no, not likely. So I said, okay, well, let's leave that one in the next year and move this back into this fiscal year. So everything that is in that is something that the department directors initially were not willing to sacrifice, needed for, you know, operations, for, you know, basically to also keeping an eye on the goals of the council, and, but we were able to, we're able to get the purchase orders done now.
And just one other question, well, the big-ticket items for me are, you know, the ones that are, have the, you know, largest price tag, obviously, are the public safety repair and the West Side feasibility study. So real quickly, 160, did we get a briefing on what that's going to go toward? I did tour it, I saw what it needed, but I can't remember if we've actually seen a plan, or that's just sort of a good ballpark number based on a lot of, you know, good heads on...
Yeah, so that, and so in the, in the CIP, and we did talk about it at the retreat a little bit, so high-level siding, some roofing, and then there's some work that needs to be done to the asphalt, there's some subsidence in the asphalt where the apparatus comes. Anything else big in that, Chief, Patrick, that would be chief, Patrick?
I would just say that we prioritized heavily the siding, probably more so than the roofing, looking at what was, needed to be done this year. And that's kind of where we're at with it right now. That's a pretty good overview, though.
Okay, thank you. And then the West Side feasibility path study, is that, is that within the, is that the entire West Side? No.
So that's the West Side from Aqua to the town line, traveling south, right? So on the West Side, we need to start with that to see, so the feasibility will determine the width, you know, kind of the width of the right-of-way, utility conflicts, constructability and that kind of stuff. So that's, that's the first step, and this was one of those high priorities for the council, so it made sense for us to bring that into this year, and it's fairly easy for us to get that money encumbered, it's just a matter of saying to the consultant, give us a, give us a contract so we can issue, or give us a proposal so we can issue a purchase order, and, you know, if that's kind of the direction we're going, you know, Mr. Hurd will make those contacts this week and say, hey, give us, get some paperwork rolling our way.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I didn't remember, but there was just a lot of...
Well, you guys get a lot of information dumped on you in the retreat.
So we only require one public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So I think what I'd like to do is make a motion that we adopt this list of moving things to 2023 to balance the budget, and then we proceed to the public hearing on the first meeting in May, knowing that in fact, we have May 17th and June 1st, and even mid-June if we have to amend it. So we have a motion on the floor. Is that a proper motion, Robert?
I guess the motion is giving direction to the town manager to proceed with preparing a balanced budget along the lines that he has suggested today. Basically, you're not adopting a budget, you're giving you directions to something that's appropriate, that's in there. Can't that work for you?
Yep, absolutely, yeah, it's just, it's good to have a, it's better to have a vote, I would accept the consensus, but a vote is much more direct.
So, do I need to restate it, or is...
No.
Yeah, my mic wasn't on, I'm sorry, earlier. The, I guess the motion was to give direction to the town manager to prepare a balanced budget for review at the next meeting and for the public hearing along the lines that he has suggested today.
As Robert stated. So what, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just, the public will be commenting at the public hearing on what we develop based on this instruction to the town manager. So they, they're not, they're, they're looking at a balanced budget, the public.
Correct, so we'll...
Because it'll be a budget, which...
Right, so we'll need to put the notice in the paper, and that'll be a balanced budget, and then the, we'll have the draft, so the draft budget document, that full, you know, we've had complaints about 200 and whatever page document, that will be available for a public inspection prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
And all these that actually to 423 will be into the property departments, et cetera, et cetera, and capital and operating?
Yes, yep.
So, hey, is there discussion on the motion on the floor?
And then after that, you can certainly make changes after consideration of the actual, how the budget looks, and then from the comments from public hearing, things like that.
That's a good bit of time to put in for a public hearing. And I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss this question, but the stuff that we're moving over to '23, how does the public see that, or do they, or what?
So when we prepare a budget amendment, so we need to amend the current fiscal year's budget to do those projects.
Is it reflected in a budget amendment that we would execute it?
Right, so, and whether that's in, it's probably going to be June. Yeah, probably be June by the time we do that. That budget amendment will also include some other cleanup stuff that we typically need to do towards the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? If you're in on all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
That'll remind council, our next scheduled meeting will be the regular meeting on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., and then with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In the meeting, adjournment.